To note the role, I'd ask all, everyone in the room to rise and join me in the pledge.
Amen. Clavdiligens, superfi, the United States of America, exuberant other, for which stands, one nation, of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nice to see so many people here. Although, I want to start out with a comment. I mean, I think many of you might be here because of the postcard from whoever, we don't know who sent it, indicated that tonight might be a public hearing about the School Sisters Project. And that's not true. There's never been a public hearing scheduled tonight. And if I had to guess today, David, a month?
Yeah, probably.
Five weeks, something like that out there. And so, I mean, obviously, you're welcome to stay. You're welcome to be, make a brief comment during our typical comment session on anything. But this isn't, there is not a public hearing in regard to the School Sisters Project. And I, and there never was one scheduled. I don't have a clue where the, I don't know who wrote that postcard, so I don't know where they got their information. If you, obviously, you're interested, if you're not signed up for the project notifications, which you can do right on the Village website, and you'll get an email on any, for anything scheduled or any documents or anything, I would suggest you do that. Because then you can keep track of where it is, plus you have direct access to all the documents if you want to read up on something. So-
Can you tell us when there will be a public forum for this?
Well, there have been multiple public forums. What that alluded to was a public hearing, an official legal hearing. As I just said a minute ago, as I just said a minute ago, it'll be about a month. There's a formal public notice set out ten days before this, people? Two weeks before. So you get two weeks of notice. And if you sign up for that online, you'll get an email saying, "The notice has been filed. Here's what it says." And then we-
We don't know the date.
We don't have it anymore.
We don't know yet.
No. No, as I said, it was, because we're waiting for some very critical pieces before the Board could even think about them in a hearing. So what I'd suggest, it sounds perhaps you might not be sign, sign up for it, so you'll get the notice. And then the way we've conducted the last, there actually have been two full hearing, public hearings previously on this project besides public forums. What we do in the public hearings is, you can sign up in advance to speak in the room, or you can speak by Zoom if you prefer to do that. But for speakers at the public hearing, we require people to sign up also, so we can manage it better and go faster.
The only thing I'd, hold on, the only thing I'd add to that would be, if you go to, the particular committees handle different pieces of the project. And that's where a lot of issues get vetted out, a lot of discussion points that they filter up to the Board. So any meeting that, whether it's Public Works, Building Board, any of the committee meetings, I would invite you to, go to any of those committee meetings, if you're on those specific issues. Now, if you have a Public Works issue, go to the Public Works one. Please don't bring to the Building Board, because they're not the people to, to talk to about it.
But the project tab-
Yeah, but the project tab-
There are just projects on the website. Every single piece of paper about the project, this project since a couple of years ago is all there, alphabetized, titled, title if you hadn't had a chance to work on it. That can be pretty helpful. The other thing about public hearing is, there'll be a speaking limit. It typically is three, three to four minutes. We ask people to stick to, so that we all get a chance to speak and try not to be too repetitive. Somebody else-
We have a website right now. It appears that on Friday the 20th, at 3:49-
Friday the 20th of what?
August.
Okay.
This is from the Village of Oak Grove. It's stated that the SSND public hearing has been canceled for 8/23. So it was canceled?
No. That's a, that's a, Port Trish, I think maybe what he tried to do was address the way that postcard said it. Because it was never, it was never a scheduled public hearing, period.
It, it was never noticed and published. We sent that notice on a Friday because of the mailer that everybody thought there was a public hearing coming today. So we wanted people who got the notice to understand there, you know, there is no public hearing, it's canceled, that it's not coming. So if you, if you were coming tonight thinking there was a public hearing, that it was very clear it was. And to Neil's point, maybe it could have been worded a little better, but we never did schedule a public hearing.
Yeah, we could have, we could, we talked a bit about this on Thursday night, Dave and I and Mr. Harrigan, uh, was just, he could have said, "There never was one scheduled, and there won't be one scheduled in the ensuing two days." A public hearing takes a two-week legal notice, published in the paper, so on and so forth.
President Palmer, can I just say one thing? Someone sent me the postcard, because I never actually received it. But it didn't say anything in the postcard about a public hearing. It just said, uh, for, you know, people to save the dates about the next two Village meetings, and for the, for the project, just to attend these important meetings. It doesn't say public hearing on the postcard.
But I was contacted by citizens that thought there was a hearing tonight.
So was I.
So someplace that we're getting misinformation.
As long as we're all here, could you give us a brief description of what the status of the project is?
Sure. And you'll get, you can find that on, on the website in both, summary and in some great depth. The short version would be that, you know, basically, a redevelopment proposal for the School Sisters of Nerding Campus was received, well, now over a year, almost a year and a half ago. The School Sisters are all moving out. Anybody who attended the open house this week, or have followed or anything there, they're downsizing significantly. They have four big facilities in North America that's telling them all, for obvious reasons, the number of sisters are declining. They're, they're moving to a new apartment complex over as part of Mount Mary College. They reviewed, received a number of proposals from developers of what to do with their site. We didn't, we don't have anything to do with that. It's private property, just like your property. And they selected Mandell for a lot of reasons, which have been-
The School Sisters of Nerding Campus was received-
Turn off the old time-
That's you.
Okay.
Uh, somebody unmuted.
So, uh, they, the, the proposal initially had, was much, could have been different, much bigger, had a, 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 what would you call it, an older adult facility in the back, it had town, town, side-by-side town duplex-type rentals along the edges. And the project was requesting rezoning because it's currently zoned institutional, meaning school, jail, something like that. So to, to have any other kind of use, you have to rezone it. And there, there's a lot of steps that come into that. Principally, there's about 18 different items that get reviewed under the auspices of the Plan Commission, but many of them dole out to individual committees. Everything from, from the sewers, potential water supply, building design goes to the Building Board. There were numerous meetings over months with the Building Board to, I'll describe, improve the, the building design. But lots of changes to it that were required. And the Building Board ultimately approved the design.
I'll say approve with some recommendations to the Board. There's a list you can find on the website of about 13 or 14 punchless items.
The, so, all the different items, everything from impact on public safety, if any, impact on schools, if any, traffic, there are two different separate traffic analysis done. All of those items are all pretty, are all done by all the committees. The Plan Commission will be taking up each of them one by one at its next meeting. But the next thing's coming, the, if a project is to be approved, there has to be a development agreement. And we have more or less just started negotiating that with the developer, the Mandell Corporation. That's basically a contract between the Village and the developer about who's responsible for what, and so on and so forth. That could potentially include a TIF, a Tax Incremental Financing District, which again, has been very, very mischaracterized by people apparently who don't understand it well. A TIF is simply a state mechanism, state law mechanism. We, we've already had two in the Village. Lots of communities have lots and lots of them. Where property, it's called the Buck Four Test, would not be, or could not be developed, redeveloped, or reused at a, at a higher level, meaning of the best use, without some kind of assistance. Because it has some kind of issue, whether it's environmental contamination, or, you know, like an industrial site could have that. In the case of the, the School Sisters property, it, it's the burden of the facilities itself, a significant amount of money for demolition of the parts of the project, of property that the School Sisters have not, have asked, have said don't need to be preserved. And then renovation, and updating to the two buildings that are proposed to be preserved. That's what we typically call the castle. That's the one closest to Watertown Plain Road. And then the building right next to it is called Maria Hall. That, that, because, you know, you want something that's historically significant, preserved, and used, or kept over time. Somebody's got to pay for it somehow. So, and then the apartments, there's basically three building, three buildings, uh, separate buildings, one on Watertown Plain Road, um, east of the existing castle, more, right across from the Watermark condominiums. And basically, the building's about the same size as the Watermark condominiums, in height and length. Same developer, as a matter of fact. Then there's another one on the east side, along, between the castle and what is Stefan Place, that first intersection, Stefan and Blue Ridge. And then there's one way in the back. The proposal also includes 21 single-family homes, think basically around, around the edge that replaced those side-by-side condominiums. Uh, the developer has brought in a, a single-family home builder, custom home builder, who actually has done quite a bit of work on the Village. That's who they proposed to work with after they got, after Mandell gave up the idea of, of side-by-side townhouses rentals, um, at the request to have more single-family homes. That ends up at 21 basic sites. Those who get zoned for a single family, uh, if you're interested in what those proposals are like, again, they're all on the website. Look under for the Miller Marriott proposals. The, the price range for the houses, which is today's marketplace, is about, you know, 700 grand to a million and three. If you want to think of a house in the Village that they have just completed, there's one just west of downtown, on the south side of Watertown Plain Road, um, just west of Elm Grove Road, which some of us know as where the Hosterman used to live. That house was torn down, and a new home built there. That's the same builder. But, so that's a, that's a rough project. There's a pile of details. And not only can you find it there, but when you start to dig into some of that, if it's new to you, you can call me, you can call Dave, you can call any of us with any kind of specific answers, and we'll try to get them here. The two big things we have left to get before we start as a board, and also the Plan Commission, making final recommendations, is the development agreement, to see what, if we can reach a contract with them. And number two is, as part of the financial review, can, for us to consider whether we want to give them any TIF at all, and if so, how much, um, we hire an outside financial consultant. Actually, we hired two. One is a financial consultant, and one is a consultant that specializes in evaluating all, all the costs of the building project that Mandell has in their proposal, in, in the proprietary part of their, proprietary part of their proposal. We hire this independent consultant for us to show, tell us whether or not those are accurate prices into this marketplace. Because we need to know what they're presuming or saying things cost in order to know whether we want to consider any kind of assistance to that. One, one more point, and then I'll turn George to comment, I think, is, the point about a TIF, to understand, is it's not taxpayers' money. It's not, that postcard was an example, said the 11.5 million could be put to better uses. There is no 11.5 million dollars. The 11 million figure comes from the proposal for a possible TIF under one scenario, by the project developer, asking for that amount in TIF. Where that money comes from is from the taxes paid by the new developer, are dedicated directly to paying the loan off. It's not yours and my tax money. If there is no project, there is no money. So it has, not only does it not have a negative impact on your taxes, by, but by building something that has tens of millions of dollars of economic value, tax property tax value, that helps your taxes. You know, as wonderful as the School Sisters property is, they've been untaxable for 170 years. They pay nothing to support the Village. Not to say that they haven't supported the Village in ways like donating land, natural entitlement, but they don't pay tax. So that's the way a TIF actually works. We borrow the money. The reason this was set up this way by the states is that communities with good, particularly ones with good tax, uh, quality credit ratings, we can borrow money cheaper than they can. So we agree to borrow it, make them responsible for paying it back. And it's their money that pays for it. In this case, we'll actually, in a sense, if you look at the proposal, you could say we have to make a profit on that. George, do you want to say something first?
Yeah, after I raised my hand, you, I was going to address the TIFs, and you covered most of what I was going to say. One other thing is, we're still in the process of negotiating with Wauwatosa over providing municipal water to these School Sisters. And also, the Watermark and the Terrace Condos have indicated they would like to get municipal water at the same time. So we're still working on that project. And that may have taken a little bit longer than the, of our overall approval of the School Sisters Mandell work.
But the, you know, that's one of the critical points, you could call community benefit of the project. The, the Mandell proposal requests municipal water. They do not want well water, or Brookfield water. They specifically want Lake Michigan water. That's where, that cost to bring the main roughly, is it 115th Street, or how far?
118th Street.
On what?
From 118th Street.
Okay. Basically, the connection with what Wauwatosa's 118th Street comes right down Watertown Plain Road, um, would serve the, the new development and the preserved two buildings, and can be extended by us. As part of the money we would see out of the TIF, we would, we intended to extend it initially, at least, to right across the tracks. But that serves as the backbone for the water project, for the effort we've had for 25 years, actually, more than that, uh, to get municipal water into the Village. Usable Lake Michigan water. It actually comes from Milwaukee, gets transferred through the Wauwatosa system. They would, Wauwatosa would become the local utility, you know, sending you the bill and taking care of your meters kind of thing, if you ever sign up. We're, we worked on a preliminary plan, because lots and lots and lots of people obviously are very interested in, in Lake Michigan water at their homes. We've worked on a preliminary plan, just to work conceptually, that you can look at it, it's available on the Public Works Committee site. It was a plan from Mooker and Melky, our Village Engineers. Just a concept of how you begin building it out in big blocks, you know, neighborhoods, to finally get municipal water into the Village. It, not just to the downtown, but to everybody's homes. You have another comment or question, ma'am?
Yes, what would be-
Actually, you know, if you're going to do it, it's going to take some time. Some of the people at home can hear. You need to speak outside the microphone. Identify yourself and speak at the microphone.
My name is Susan Hanson. I'm curious as to what the additional population would be supported by the project.
A new, new population in the projected project?
I don't have the number around here.
We got it, yes.
It's in the, it's in today's, it's in, oh, it's in the census report piece.
It's in the clerk's memo.
Right?
Yes, correct.
Recognize that this is for the apartments, where it's a lot easier to speculate. You can't, it's a little hard to pick on the 21-
What was the project?
Single-family homes. Just, just a moment, give us a chance to pull it out here. There's a lot of numbers in this, so we, I don't walk around with a memo.
Is it option 4C, or are people looking at?
Option 4, yeah.
Yeah, what?
There are so many numbers out here.
Okay. Um, single-family housing estimates, it's 12 houses of 2.62 people per house. And then, as far as the apartments, there's 237 units, and they're, they estimate 1.44 people per unit. So, so, well, this is, you can laugh, but if you have better numbers, you're welcome to hear them. Because this is what we get based on what Mandell has experienced, and what we've checked out. And this is where the Sen, US Census Bureau counts, is what.
The apartment numbers are pretty, you can bet on them being quite accurate, because they have lots of units, just like, or this or-
Can you translate that into a whole number of times?
Well, one point we've got there.
No, look, I'm just-
21-
296 total.
No, 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 no.
No, 21 times 2.62.
It's 55 plus 341.
Yeah, so just under 400.
Oh, yes.
Well, I took out the school sisters.
One, one person at a time.
You need to take the 100 school sisters out. That's why you get down to that low level.
So it's 341.
So just under 300 total, yes.
And that's assuming that in the single-family homes, there's only 2.6 people. We actually have a somewhat of a record in, in, or, or history in the, in the Village. You know, there'll, a number of families are attracted by the St. Mary's Parish, and tend to have more children than, than 0.6. I don't know, I have a 0.6 child, but anyway, so the single families might have more. The apartments, you know, we compare their, their estimates when they submit them. Obviously, they're in the business, they have a pretty good idea how many people live in their high-end apartments. But they also have similar projects, just like it on the east side, which we use the population numbers for, and the age quotient to do the school in there. And again, it's going to, it's negligible. It's not a lot of people. The Village right now, I mean, we, we actually gained about 1,000 people, I'm reading that tab right?
Yeah.
Uh, in the last 10 years, which is still down almost 2,000 from the 70s.
We have 6,513 people in the census.
And right, and what was last, the last one? If you go to that chart.
Yeah. The last one was 5,900. So it's, it's up by about 600 in 10 years. But that's still quite a bit lower than it was in the- Which is, which is a 10% increase.
Yeah. It went up 10% from just, you know, it's, I think for any of, all of us, wherever you live, now I've been here 32 years, I think we're in like the third cycle of, I've got lots of little kids on my street now. When, when I moved in, my wife and I, and our first child was born about eight months after we moved in, but we had, we were the only, call it baby, on six blocks of the street, this six blocks long. With, by the time my kids were going to eighth grade, there was 11 kids standing, and I'd stand in my driveway. And then it went to nothing. Now it's-
The Village, this is a, this is a very typical, this is a very, it's a different type of place. So I moved in here in 06. This is a place I've ever lived as an adult. And when I moved in, I had two 18-month-old kids. And now those two kids in two years are going to be gone. If I'm like any other Elm Grove residence, I'm going to be here another 30 years, 40 years, um, without any kids in my house. And-
They're always from that.
When everyone, when everyone leaves, so it's, it has made it, because I did the, I did the school impact analysis. I was one of the, talked to the people at the district. I was the one that got the numbers for the various other apartments around here. And that was something that sort of came up, was with Elm Grove, you've got, it's, it's a little bit different of a dynamic, because people just, people don't leave, people love it here, and people don't leave. And so that creates a little bit of a dynamic, dynamic with the schools. I can tell you that if their numbers are about 400 on here, I'd say it's probably closer to, you know, it's 400 less 100. When I was going through it, I thought it'd probably be closer to 600 less 100. So probably about a net 500 percent increase is my thought on where, on where it would be. But-
They're, they're using the national number for residents per single-family home. And that's, I don't think that applies here. Sure, you have a point, question?
Yes. My name is John Horner, and I want to thank you for the first half hour tonight. It was very informative, for those who have not kept up like I haven't. But I'd like to know what the agenda looks like for the rest of the night, to see if I wanted to stick around or not.
Is there one in the back? Yeah. You can have mine if you want, John.
There's a variety of things to discuss. It's about the only School Sisters to discuss.
What we do, there's this, there's nothing else, School Sisters. What we do at every monthly meeting, which by the way, you need some excitement in your life, John. You can come every month. But also, you can watch us on TV. But we go through every committee, whatever they've done in, in the previous one month, whatever activities they've had a meeting, what did they do, what resulted from that. We have a couple items, you know, on the status of our effort to form a, a, a new way of financing our roads, because our roads are in such fact, because we don't have any money to fix them. Everything there, the library, whatever, what's the latest on, on, in the Public Works Department, where we have annual certification on sewers and stuff. I mean, so, one of the items of, of real interest to a lot of people is, uh, under the Recreation Committee, that we've been looking at a number of things there. And one of the things at the meet, from the meeting last week, was a unanimous recommendation from the Recom, the Recreation Committee to make significant upgrades to the bathhouse. It's probably pretty generous to say that it's bad. Nothing has been done to change the character of the two changing rooms since the 60s. So they're a little rugged, and this was a summer that really, really showed it. You know, it's not only dirty, because it's, it's exposed, if the friend you haven't been in there for a few decades. You know, there's no rough on it. Rain comes in, there's plants growing between the cracks. My daughter pointed out to me when she took my grandson there, the change in the, in the room to go use the splash pad, that the changing table for babies was great, was donated by her fifth-grade girl scout troop. My daughter's a little older than fifth grade now. And it was sanitary-wise, it was pretty bad. We saw it a number of times. We're going to talk about that recommendation. Anybody else think of anything on here tonight that's kind of out of the ordinary?
No.
There's always the finances.
Come to the-
Yeah, anybody else make a comment? We'll, we'll spend one more time on that.
Hi, Christine Kraus. A question on the 237 apartments, is that, could they be somehow converted to condos instead of having apartment living environment?
Well, um, the answer's always yes, in the sense that an owner could always convert them. The question of condos versus apartments was a very big one at the beginning of this effort. And as a matter of fact, there was two different presentations at the Plan Commission that we requested, as to, in effect, saying to Mandell, "Why don't you want to build condominiums?" And the short answer, I'll give you the day gave, and then actually, one of the meetings were when three, I think it was different, outside financial real estate experts who come in, every one of them said, "Because there's, the market is very weak for condominiums, even if it's relatively good here. But most importantly, it's because the financial risk is way too high, that nobody's doing it except in very unique spots." Essentially, the difference between a condominium and an apartment is, if you're the developer, you put up all the money, let's, let's use the same number, you put up the $40 million over three years while you build them. So you're paying interest, and you're doing all that. And then you find out if you can sell them. And particularly after the '08, '09 financial meltdown on the real estate market, nobody's doing it, period. I mean, they, they were very clear about it, as far as Mandell. I mean, they, they were very clear about it as far as Mandell. Mandell built the watermark. Again, for any of you who are here, you might remember, they opened in 2007.
No.
They had the place about half under contract when, when the 2008 real estate recession hit. Everybody nailed, they lost millions. Now, in the case of Mr. Mandell, he decided not to bankrupt the facility, he closed it. He, as he put it, "I proudly accepted my millions of dollars of law, but he will never build another condominium." So, I mean, we analyzed it as best we could. Again, I encourage you to look at that information on, on the plan commission. It really comes down to, I mean, I'll tell you, I met, was at a meeting up at the Indian Hills Annual Meeting, and one of the gentlemen in that room happens to be a president of a bank, and he made the comment of, well, you know, everybody knows you can sell condominiums in Elm Grove. And I simply asked him, and I said, well, that means you'd finance them for $40 million? And he said, well, no. It, I mean, it comes down to what's actually realistically possible. High-end residential apartments are predicted to do very, very well here. People, just to give you a thought on that, people say, oh, well, so many have been built, there's not any more demand. I, I guess I look at it a couple ways. Number one, um, in the case of somebody building an apartment, building, they're only gonna build what they think they can lease, because empty units don't pay rent and you've got a very big nut to cover. But, you know, there's one new resident, residential quote, high-end apartment complex right on Blue Mount, just east, I mean, just west of Elm Grove Road, that's 98% leased.
I, I will, Neil, if I can pick up on that point, because as part of doing the analysis of the, of the, of the Elm Grove School District, I, I contacted the district and I asked for comparables. What are, what are apartment complexes in the Elm Grove School District that I can, that we can use as comparables? And they have numbers on these, on the complexes, and how many kids are from all the complexes and what? And they gave me four units, or four separate units, I don't know them off the top of my head right now, they're in the presentation that you can find online. And then I also asked him to add in, I did the call with the, with another gentleman in town, um, who's lived here his, his whole life and, and who's very fired up about the schools, and I thought, it's a friend of mine, so why don't you join me on this call? And he suggested that we also add in where his sister was living, which is right next to Brookfield East. The guy at the district said, I don't think that that one's necessarily appropriate because it's lower ends, could have more kids, it might skew, skew your analysis, but it's, if right next to a school like this is gonna be, it's in the Brookfield East part of the district. Um, so we, so we did add it in, and I will tell you that all five of those apartment complexes, when I contacted them and got their numbers, every single one was 98% or higher occupied. And which, which really, I don't know, it shocked me. Uh, I didn't think that's what it was going to be, but that's, that's what it was. There is, despite what I may think, despite what I may read, uh, that people write on, wherever they write it, that just was, that was the objective fact that I discovered as part of, of doing the, the research on that issue. So, for what it's, for what it's worth, I know, but I believe or not believe, I'm just telling you, that's what I specifically thought.
That's the, that's the actual data, that high-end apartments, it's, you know, it's a little bit different world out there for, and where maybe some of us were, but also that, that. So, if we're gonna keep going, the gentleman's right, the man had his hand up first, and then we'll go over here to the right.
And the reason you have, we have you come there, is there are people watching this? They can't hear your question unless you're, unless they're there.
And we recorded for people to look at. So, Peter, if you would, state your name and your address.
My name is John Geter. I've been an Elm Grove resident very long time, was a Notre Dame mover, and all this discussion seems premature, academic, unless you change the zoning laws. Where are you on that? What happened to the lawsuit? And also, if you do change the zoning laws, is that on an ad hoc basis? Is that for this project only? Or does that open it up to all kinds of mischief for the next 50 years?
We don't, we're not changing, the proposal is not to change the zoning law. We have existing zoning rules. They filed an application under our rules, which we will either approve or disapprove the zoning. We also might approve or modify the actual proposal, but the zoning, what they want is allowed under our existing rules. So, the direct answer to your, John, would be theoretically, you know, anybody could apply to do the same thing on different properties, not, not the same numbers or anything like that, but to apply to, to adjust zoning. We had a proposal just like that a few years ago, on the Reinders property, which is zoned industrial, not institutional. You might remember that, the Long Guard Development Company and Reinders in partnership wanted to build some apartments there. That would require rezoning from industrial to, uh, B2 business, which allows multifamily. So, it's not a change in law, it's, they're using the law that's been here for a long time.
That may well be, but even so, if that project goes through, once that happens, does that open the door to any other projects under the, under the zoning laws that?
No, 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 not at all. As a matter of fact, people in their, in that business would tell you that once, if this project gets built, it's likely to make the potential to develop another project on the Reinders side, which is really the only remaining kind of largest piece of property, less likely for quite some time, because you've, you've absorbed kind of the customer base.
Right.
But no.
The reason I mention this is because there are many people who have asked me, uh, you know, does this open up the community to any type of project based on the zoning change going into the future, and what would that do to property values?
Let us know.
A lot of families concerned about that.
There, there is not a change to our zoning law. That point, end, full stop. This is, this, this, our code has existed like this for quite some time. They're simply taking it, you know, they're proposing to use it, we haven't decided what we're gonna do. We, in effect, went through the same process to approve the watermark back in '06 or whatever that was.
The old tackle.
The apartments, the heritage health facility on, on Wall Street, which is where the printing company used to be, that was rezoned.
I mean, that entire neighborhood over there, at one point, was all part of school sisters, it all had to get rezoned residential.
But the point is, allowing them to put apartments and the single-family homes on the school sister site only applies to that site. It can't be used to somehow shoehorn it into other places. Thank you. That was basically my question, that's all I needed answered.
And actually, it's two different zones, single-family plus the watermark. You're over here, sir?
Do you, I, I can answer that.
No. Please, come up, identify just so people know who you are.
Hi, my, my name is Phil Hawkins, 940 San Jose. Thank you for all the work you all are doing, I know this is probably making you and all your constituents crazy. Um, a couple of baseball history, I was moved here in '64, and there were lots of undeveloped areas, the whole land west of the sisters, the 124th was undeveloped, the area around the Sunset Playhouse was undeveloped, a lot of that land west or east of Pilgrim was undeveloped, and we used to be called the Bird Sanctuary, and I don't see that site anymore. We, we're good.
Yeah, it's still there.
It was, I don't know if they have it, maybe it's because they're doing the construction. But it's sort of a people sanctuary, too. And so this, this buildup and this increased density of construction bothers me, I'm, I'm basically opposed to it. But my, my question is, well, a couple. One, does the group, Mandell own the property now, or is it contingent on the approval?
No, it's, as is typical in most real estate deals, it, they have a, they have a contract that gives them the right to try and develop it, and if they get appro, you know, usually they pay something for the right to go. If they get approval, then they complete the sale.
The, the value of the community is obvious, I mean, in terms of the tax base, but the value of green space is, I think, high. And once it's taken out of green space, you can't get it back. We've seen that all through the city of Alatosa, the whole area around the medical complex. Will never be green space again, I don't care what you do. So, my last question is, have we done a survey or any kind of a referendum about the use of this property as opposed to the village buying and taking ownership of it and maintaining it in the way that we all are kind of used to? I'll stop with that, thank you.
Somebody, somebody over. Audience ahead behind the podiums.
Hi, Dawn Velcom.
Don, pull the microphone down a little bit.
Sorry. Um, the only question I have is, I keep hearing that this is a luxury, um, project. However, when I look at the PowerPoint by Mandell, it gives the square footage, how can you have a three-bedroom luxury apartment with only 1,500 square feet? I think the square footage is way too low, I think the number of apartments should be smaller, and the square footage should be bigger. These numbers just don't make sense. If you have a three-bedroom apartment at 1,500 square feet, are those 10 by 10 rooms? I mean, you can't get anything in there.
I, I would to guess you bring those kind of comments to the plan commission, because we're the ones that, I mean, well, you're obviously welcome to make them now, but, um, all I can do to answer that, and it'd be better to take them, when we talk at the plan commission, when they have their desires. The bottom line answer for you though, simply is, that's the price today. The, the million-dollar houses that I talked about that Mr. Miller intends to build typically are gonna run around, uh, 1,800 square feet.
Okay, and with?
I mean, that's, that's today's building market. Those apartments you're talking about as seeming too small will, will cost $2,500 a month. That's higher than most people's mortgages.
Well then, should the word luxury be taken out of them?
Hey, it's, it's called marketing. I mean, they also call a lot of things at restaurants food.
Well, that's true.
That's true, it doesn't mean it is. No, I mean, those are, I, I agree with you, I mean, when I'm, every time I see a place on homes, it, it's kind of startling. And sort of the older you are, the more startled you are.
And some of that is the marketplace. Some of it is not just the square footage, it's the finishes.
Well, I got the kind of countertops you had, what kind of, uh, flooring fixtures and so forth.
Is it all gonna be granite countertops?
Oh, this is all, and, and all the higher levels.
We don't have that information here in front of us, since this wasn't a hearing, I don't have the plans and the power plants, so I can't, I don't think we can really give you an answer to some of these. Again, when Neil says, is this something that is more properly addressed in one of the plan commissions, where they'll have that data and where the Mandell representatives will be.
There's also the fact that the building itself, um, is, is a very, very high-quality building. I, there's kind of a quick eye views for now quite a long time, a couple of decades. Whenever anybody's thinking about building a business in Elm Grove or new building, I always jokingly, but seriously say to them, I want you to build the most expensive building you can build and stay in business. Because the more expensive the building is, the higher its top tax value for us to help generate. But what the building board went through with them, and John sits on the building board, over weeks and weeks and weeks.
Many.
Everything about that building is the highest quality materials, period. And we insist on it.
I have a huge interest in this, because I would like to die in the house I am now, but I may end up moving into one of these. I would like a European bathroom, toilet, you know, that type of thing.
Well, I'll tell you what people do, just like, and they'll probably do with this one, when they, if the project gets further, just like it did with Monyard, people were signing up for potential apartments in that quote, luxury proposal before he canceled it, and basically, kind of, I'll call it redesigning an apartment that they were then willing to sign a lease for, for some extent, if you're, I'm sure Mr. Mandell would be happy to talk about that. But, and your comment though, the market is very much, this is aimed at empty nesters in Elm Grove, Brookfield area, but particularly Elm Grove. A lot of people through the years have indicated a desire, they want to get out of their house, but there's nowhere to move into in Elm.
Right.
And they're very interested in this, and, you know, the real estate marketplace will tell you, people today would rather have a rental than a condo for a lot of reasons. Condos can be a bad financial investment. I like the term I hear from a lot of gentlemen, which, ladies is, the last thing I would ever do when I move out of my house is go to meetings on carpet color, you know?
Right.
In a condo. They want the freedom of rental with the luxury, and comes with concierge and all that kind of stuff now.
And then my last comment is, in the PowerPoint in October 2017, it had 100 senior living units.
Okay, those are gone.
Okay, well, and why are they gone? Because I thought this was directed at seniors, and so are they gonna have ramps for seniors? Because?
The buildings are accessible, but what that was is a, a senior living, uh, not a, not an assisted living.
Right.
But a proposal for a, very much like a, a building like was just built out on Blue Mount, uh, where it's older, smaller units, a, a lower level price, and basically, I mean, one of the reasons they proposed it back there is they're saying, it was all, all the way at the south end of the site, it's up against the railroad, it's, that's a use that wasn't particularly disturbed by the railroad, just like the heritage on the other side by the DPW, and most of the people at the early 15 or 20 meetings we had were dead set against that.
It was a response to Mandell to reducing the number of units and the number of?
Took the 100 units off the case.
I see there.
Right. And so even with?
The developer was responding to what some of the people were saying in the community that they wanted less apartments and less people on that site.
So, that they now want it out.
Now it's a cul-de-sac.
A cul-de-sac with 11 houses as opposed to 100 apartment units.
So, they're going to be wheelchair accessible?
Apartments, oh yeah, yeah.
All right, all right, thank you.
Thank you. And sign up for the, the project notice, so you'll get an accurate email.
My name's Tom Castiel. I didn't know where I should be talking today. I appreciate the opportunity that, um.
Well, we didn't either.
I was at my home just right on that road, and somebody was texting saying that they were talking about SSMD, so I jumped in, got socks and ran over here.
We don't, we don't have a dress code here.
I'm in shorts, too.
You do have to be dressed, but we don't have a dress code.
Even for Zoom. My main question is, it feels like a lot of people, the citizens really aren't being listened to very well. The people with regards to some of the responses from trustees, with regards to the postcard went out, seem to be somewhat disingenuous, I know the intention may not be that way, but it comes across disingenuous, whether it's 8%, 10%, we use this number or that number.
I'd like to answer that.
It's, it comes across to people, and the citizens have concern, who put their efforts, who live and have their vested interest in our homes. I'm not one of the ones, the type of person that's gonna have the money to rent for $3,500 a month in one of these apartments down the road. My livelihood, my income, my home is a lot, the big portion of my savings. And when I look at this proposed development, you look at 237 apartments with 1.4 people in them, I don't believe it. We always, we talk about Mandell advertising, marketing. Well, it seems like we believe some of the stuff they say when it fits the narrative, but other times, well, it's just marketing. 1.4, I don't believe that number, they have 400 parking spots. If the average is 1.4, why do you have 400 plus parking spots that they were, you know, required to put in, the high level? And from the citizen's side, there feels like there's a little bit of lack of transparency with regards to the discussions and what's going on and the financial aspects of this. $900,000 per average for those homes. If they could sell homes for that, what's the alternative cost, instead of doing the large apartments, doing single-family homes for 1.5, 900,000? What's that cost? Are those economics available to the citizens to take a look at?
This is a quick response. On your issue about not listening to transparency, this is the first time I've ever seen you at a meeting. Is that correct?
No.
On this project?
No.
But we've had something in the neighborhood of 50 or 60 meetings.
Yeah.
Every one of which is open to the public. Every single document about this entire affair is available to you. There's nothing that we've ever seen that you can't see or haven't seen.
In my experience, it's been.
I, I get to answer now, too.
Go ahead.
I, I don't know how you'd be more transparent than that. Early on, there was commentary from various people on here, they're trying to jam this thing through. It's gonna be approaching two years before we get any final vote. That, we have worked very, very hard to judiciously address individual items. Every issue you just mentioned has had extensive analysis and information that I'd be happy to sit down and talk with you in detail, once you've read the. that I'd be happy to sit down and talk with you in detail, once you've read the materials to back up the various aspects of your concerns. So, the problem with an issue like this is it is a large and complex question. There are pros and there are cons. Our job is to try to take all of that and go like this. What's the best thing for the village? Overall, tomorrow and 20 tomorrows and 50 tomorrow. That's what we're all doing. Very, very slow way in the factor. You can agree or disagree with where we end up on given issues, but you need to study every bit of it like we have.
Yes, and believe me, when I first saw the key bone of Charmings Science, just like, when was this, like nine months or so ago, was the first time I really started getting involved. First time I looked at the downtown master plan. First time I really started getting involved in these type of discussions and what's going on in this village. And it basically made me realize that I do need to get involved. I do need to study these things. I do need to review that.
You need to sit down and do it all.
I need to, because what's going to happen? We're going to see 237 plus apartments down there and a complete change to the charming nature of Elm Grove for the sake of short-term revenue gains. And it may not be short-term because you're looking at 20-plus years for this TIF. There are a lot of opposing arguments about what the negatives are to TIF and TIS and with regards to the ability to tax the base. You can't pay for the schools, can't pay merchant service, can't pay for all these other, you know, general services from the revenue generated from SSND. Have we truly looked at it? There's this information out there. I'd love to look at it. And we could do comparative analysis with regards to other types of developments at SSND other than Mandel starting off with 5,000 apartments. Oh, look how good we are. We're going to drop it down to 300, now 237. But we want 11.5 million, which of course, I'm sure the negotiations will come down to. Okay, we'll settle for 9 million. It's Mandel. It's marketing. Have we looked at alternatives? The village, most of the citizens out there, whether you believe it or not, are opposed to the high density.
Most of the citizens you've talked to.
No, no. Most of the people, the citizens, I would bet if we did a poll, would be against this.
Well, we did a poll.
We did a poll.
We did polls. I just, now I'm going to talk a little bit, Neil.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, John. I am so tired, I mean honestly tired, of people saying they're not being listened to. Because I have met with huge groups of people in the backyard. I've given, I've presented to the Junior Guild. I rented the damn gazebo and started throwing open houses. I have people who have come in here. My kid's old soccer coach, he was in the back of the room screaming at one of these meetings. I text him. I'm like, I can't give his name. Meet me for a beer this weekend and let's talk. I have gone out of my way, and I keep telling people, just because you've, because it's not going exactly the way you want it to go, don't think you're not being listened to. I think everyone has done an amazing job. They've done so much heavy lifting for us. Mandel's been beaten down by so many citizens that they keep- I don't even have to bring up things like, "We've already changed this." I was like, oh, well, that was on my list of things I wanted to talk about. Why aren't you doing this? Why aren't you doing that? The TIF stuff infuriates me because I tell people, listen, if we do what you're suggesting, in 10 years, we will just be a goddamn neighborhood in Brookfield. That's it. We will be absorbed by Brookfield. We can't leave what we're doing. You don't have to do Mandel 237 apartments. But that is not required. You can do TIFs under different types of structures. Mandel 237 is not required. We can, but I have actually looked at the numbers.
We're going to have a meeting to do.
We're in the open public meetings.
I want to apologize for implying in any way that you don't work hard and that you're not transparent in the other areas. From what I understand, from what my view is, especially like with the petition that was signed last year, the fact that that was, that's a whole different topic now for tonight.
Totally different topic.
The majority of people that signed it readily and wanted to basically see that because they don't, many of them don't want to have SSND. And if you listen to the people, you did a poll, you'd find it. But thank you for your time.
Would you like to sit down and actually speak with somebody one-on-one, like on your issue about TIF? Pick up the phone or you're emailing. Get a hold of one of us.
I'll sit down and hang on. I am actually hanging on. I said with Tommy, well, I'm part of one day.
Can I interrupt now?
Yeah.
This is going way beyond the open public meeting. As we said at the outset, this is a-
We appreciate this very much. I won't take any more time, but I'm gladly do that because if you have an interest, it's fantastic.
I'm not objecting so much to you as now having a given take and a back and forth.
This is your- I said this is your reprimanding me, but trying to do nicely. I apologize. I appreciate this very much. This is a heck of a log that I always, when I was hearing the one of the earlier ones, I thought you could have had these kind of discussions and it was not allowed, but I appreciate this opportunity. I really do.
We can do this at any level. We can't do it in here. We do it one-on-one all the time. So, you just have to pick up the telephone and call us.
We need to go for another walk.
Fantastic. And we can both of you go here today. Thank you.
We have one other unrelated to school sister comment. I think Mary wants to talk. Anybody want to make one on the other final public comment? Mary, we're still on the first item on the agenda of public comment with no action. And Mary, you know what we're going to do to talk about this bathhouse, so don't, please.
I'll talk about what I want to, Neil. Thank you.
Yeah, you get your three minutes to do it.
That's right.
I'll time it out.
Okay. I'm here. I'm Mary Indem, 14745 Watertown Plank Road. Good evening. The Elm Grove Business Association is having their second shred day for this year. September 18th, which is a Saturday in a couple of weeks, and it's from 9 until noon. Please do not throw in metal, bullets, dishes, pots and pans, as we have gotten them passed. And also newspapers. Don't bother to bring newspapers, but if you have old office things, you've been cleaning out your attic because of COVID, it'll be at the Park and Shop. The access will be off of Wall Street behind the 890 Building. So, take Watertown Plank to Elm Grove Road, head south to Wall Street, turn east, and then come up through that parking lot behind the 890 Building. The trucks will be parked near the former Martinizing Building. We will be having volunteers, and they will be helping you unload the car. Please don't just unload and leave stuff on the side of the parking lot. We do shred. If you want to watch the shredding to make sure your taxes and things are gone, you can stay and watch. We'll just ask you to empty your car and move it.
Just quickly again, Mary, which day and what time?
Saturday, September 18th, from 9 until noon at the Park and Shop. Thank you. Another topic is just a request to the people who are on the board who were not at the Recreation Committee meeting, that you reconsider and have a volunteer chair the 4th of July in the future. It was handed over to Jared last year. The prior year, we did not have an event. And Jared tried his hardest, but he has a full-time job, and on the 4th, it's bigger than a full-time job. Well, then you hand him another full-time job for that day, which is that of an event planner. So, there's a lot of planning that goes on between the end of the 4th and the next 4th. But unfortunately, Jared was called away during some of the events that he was going to be host of and manage and organize. And he made some decisions like the type of medals that were ordered. It was not at all what people were expecting or wanted. They were chintzy little bronzy-looking, smashed-out penny-looking things. We had ordinarily silver, gold, silver, and bronze, heavy, almost Olympic-type medals that the kids got. Somehow, he lost or misplaced the medals that I gave him when I handed over the job to him. So, I think it just, I could work with, you know, I gave him my, some of my notes. He never did call for advice. I think we could do better with a volunteer chairperson like we've had in the past. While I was doing it for those 35 years, we had co-chair people. Couples and single women who, you know, I should say individual women who would help out. And it just was rather smooth. And I think when something looks smooth, it looks like you can just hop in and do it. It's a bigger deal. There are 3,000 to 5,000 people that show up throughout the day and into the evening and the fireworks. And I think it would have been much better served to have a regular chairperson as a volunteer. You don't pay them. They volunteer. It's a good idea. You've all gotten the photographs in the packet that I sent out. There's some fresh photos, sort of fresh, on your podium tonight. The problem is that I noticed this throughout the summer. My grandson came and I treated him to swimming lessons, about eight weeks' worth, and nothing got better. And I would talk to the staff and ask the guards, "Please put toilet paper in the ladies' room." It might get there in the next hour, it might not, but daily for weeks on end, at 9:00 in the morning for one set of lessons, for 10:30 in the morning at another set. The sanitation was terrible, and Neil talked at the Recreation Committee about redoing things and looking at them for next spring. The problem is, if you look at the picture with the bench, you think about COVID, mildew, I'm sorry, mildew, mold, fungus. You don't clean this up this year, it's only going to eat its way into the surfaces even further, and it's so disgusting. I can't tell you how many people commented to me, for less than two hours, the day that I got those signatures that you got in the packet, less than two hours, 26 people signed the request that those restrooms and dressing areas be cleaned.
It's my understanding that the Rec. Committee has already taken this up and has made some plans and inwards. And they're going to be proposing major maintenance and perhaps reconstruction of some of that area.
Right.
So, it is being handled, Mary.
I was there, George. I know. My point is that to wait with some of this till next spring, you're going to go through eight months of fall, rain, and snow.
And it's my understanding there is remediation work being done. The major things are going to have to be a budget item.
Yes, and that was on my-
And that's going to be done.
Yeah.
It's already been discussed.
Okay.
And I think people saw this. They took it very, very seriously. I know Katie sort of-
We did, weren't we?
Yeah.
And we're doing things, we are doing things.
About the authenticity of all your photos.
Mary, this, as you heard in the, and were part of at the committee meeting, the floor as an example that you were just calling on, is going to be redone this fall. You heard that.
Oh, no, you said it would be next spring.
No, I didn't. Not the floor. The floor is this spring, I mean this fall, as part of the pool deck preservation. I told you that. The committee talked about it. You were there.
I didn't hear that part. I'm sorry.
Well, and we are not taking all the other things that George alluded to, including we're looking at, going to get a complete proposal as to how we want to renovate the whole place. And are you- Different from your own proposed construction. That's not your area of expertise, Mary. We'll turn it over to some experts and get proposals.
I was just going to ask if you were going to talk to-
Of course.
Roofing and so on.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any other public comments tonight, items for which there's no action?
Can I just say something, President Palmer? I just want to say, I didn't really talk that much this evening at them, but I just want to say that if you have not received a personal email back from me, and if you did email us, I think I've already responded to over 150. I do represent all of you. I have been listening. I have been documenting. I thank you for being here this evening and staying for as long as you have, especially for those of you that haven't spoken. So, thank you.
Absolutely. And if you haven't signed up to get notified by email, please do that. It'll help you a lot to know when all meetings are. Go under the website, go under Community Projects. You know, I think the School Sisters is the first one. You click on there. That'll show you where everything is, every single document and so on there, and you can sign up to be notified of anything to do.
Yeah, and the committee meetings are really the ones to go to because those are the ones that really discuss all the issues, and those are the ones that have the citizens on them that are, we've got wonderful citizen experts in the village here that are on all those committees that do a really good job of assisting with answering all the questions, too.
And when you, if you go in and look at those materials that the committees did, a lot of it is pretty deep stuff. I mean, a lot of information. If you look at a particular issue you're interested in, you have questions about it, just call one of us or send us an email. It's probably easiest. If you want to get together or either get an answer or for us to get an answer for you. That's a way to get at the details so you understand what's really, what's really being proposed and what's not being proposed, or what's changed over the last year and a half, which is a whole lot of stuff. The senior living aspect is a perfect example. But thank you.
Black president, I asked if there had ever been a consideration for a referendum on the School Sisters. Has that been done?
No, it's not been done. You obviously know.
The discussion about petitions, of course, rather than focused on that, but a community-wide referendum makes for parents to be one, how the community felt about this.
All right, we're going to move along on our agenda now. The next item on the agenda is actually the approval of the agenda.
Move approval.
Anybody have any proposing, have a motion to approve, or a second?
Second.
Motion to a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and we have minutes, first set from the 624 Committee of the Whole.
I have a change on there. It shows that I attended, and I was absent from that meeting.
No other comments? Okay, is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next set are the July 26 minutes. Anybody have any corrections or additions?
Move to approve.
A motion to approve, got to get a second.
Second.
Motion and a second about 15. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And finally, a committee of the whole meeting on August 5th. I think I'm moving through. A motion, got to get a second.
Second.
And a second from John. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next is the report of the village president. I don't have any specific items tonight. Next item in your packets, and our typical agenda is the report of the fire chief, the report of the police chief, and EMS. You've all gotten those monthly reports. Any outstanding questions? There are none. We'll move on past them. And Michelle, village clerk.
Yeah, so we have nine, a review of possible action on the Elm Grove election ward redistricting. I put a memo together. I went to a county working kind of seminar thing based on the maps and the redistricting from previous years. And I included a bunch of examples of ways that we could go about. But ultimately, where we are at right now with the current census data is that one of our wards is over the acceptable number of residents. So, we are forced to do some redistricting. Based on everything that's in there, if you've gone through it, I'm recommending option four because it does take into consideration the possibility that there may be some sort of development on the School Sisters property, be it the Mandel or some other project. If we do option four, it would cover us percentage-wise. If nothing happens there, we would still be within acceptable norms. If a little bit happens there, it would still be good. If the exact plan as they proposed happens, and it goes all the way up to if they are wrong about their population and it increases even 155 more, we would still be within where we're supposed to be for the next 10 years. If we chose option one or two or three, and something did happen at that site, we would be out of compliance rather quickly with our ward map. So, I would be hoping that you would choose option four, which would allow me to move forward and change our ordinance to reflect our choice for-
If we are out of compliance, is there any ramifications?
If someone were to challenge any of our elections based on them knowing that our numbers are out of compliance, it could throw us into some sort of legal situation.
Make some lawyers win for a while.
It might be a Supreme Court-type thing that, you know.
Let me ask this question. What are the question where wards may not vote?
A better question is that.
We do.
Wait.
Sure, go ahead.
Let's stick for a second on, assuming we have to do this, or unless you want to. I was going to ask the general question, too. Why do we have to have wards at all?
It's just a statutory requirement.
There is no wards option for a small village like ours.
That's not an option.
There's really one voting. I know boards usually determine when you vote. Everyone votes one way.
If we were to be swept by Supervisory District or something like that, then there would be a, you know, legal reason.
Yeah, we could be, but we're not even elected by district, so why do we have to parse ourselves out by a specific number of population? It doesn't, it doesn't result in anything. It doesn't, it doesn't result in anything for us. We all vote, we're all elected at large, we all vote in the same place. But, I get it, I get it. Um, but I, I want to thank you for, for all this detailed analysis. I mean, you know, I'm not, it's, it's, and I recognize that all the options and all the regulation really are built in for places like cities that have lots of wards and lots of moving population and, in order to make it work like.
How did Ward Two get so much rack? I'm looking at it, it talks about any new construction out there.
It was already close to the threshold prior, so only approximately 60 people more, which could be children, pushing at the top.
Just like, just like percentages for, even on the police or fire report, you know, a 50% increase might be two things. It doesn't take much to throw us off because we're so small. But I would support and recommend accepting the, the proposal, the clerk's proposal for number four.
Which now, four?
I'll second that.
This is option four.
Option four just gives you scenarios, but option four map is the one specifically they're referring to.
The one she recommended.
Mahalaski, second you said.
Second.
Good. Motion second.
I got Mahalaski for second.
Already, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, then the next item I have for 9B is review and possible action on resolution 082321B to appropriate library funds.
At the, on the, one of the final pages, where you have the timeline, you're also talking about reporting units and how we divide up the places where people will vote.
So, you guys were talking about how everybody votes here at the village hall. Currently, we have two reporting units, which is one through four and five through eight, but since 2012, the ballot has been the same. So I'm going to recommend and send to the Finance, or not Finance, Legislative Committee, that we combine and make one reporting unit. So that'll be coming later after, after this.
So that requires further action, then? Just us doing it?
So our current ordinance with our reporting units is actually outdated, so it says one and two, three and four, five and six, seven and eight. So it's four reporting units in our current code, so I'd like to update that with legislation and then have that sent to the next village board.
That requires an ordinance.
Correct.
Thank you.
And it makes it easier for our staff during an audit election day.
Yeah, we can operate half staff.
Whether it's going to be a bottleneck for voters on a large, say, national election like we just had, where people were backed up around the halls.
We'll be able to split the rooms up and take absentees out, take our station out, so more tables, more rooms.
So we'll take it up at Legislative and, um...
Yeah.
Okay.
Next item?
Okay, so 9B, the resolution for the appropriation of library funds for 2022. This is something that we do every year through the Bridges Rockshire County program. We just need a motion for approval.
Yeah, this is resolution 082321B, solo audience understand, yeah. The way the state library support system works is counties support the libraries inside their county. And you can opt in or opt out of the county control, which we opt out by simply, we essentially ask to be allowed out. This happens lots of places, because we already spend more per tax dollar than other communities in the county anyway. So it just says, we don't need them to run our library for us. We have a very, very successful library in cooperation with the county system, and we trade books and all that, but we don't follow their funding system because we don't get their money. That's what this is. We do it every year. Could I have a motion to approve? So, second?
Second.
Second, Christina? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that...
That's all for the clerk. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, report of the commander, David.
Okay, usually, I do have a couple of things for this evening. First is item A, the extension of the R&amp;R Investments Agreement. This is the same exact agreement as we've had in the past. They have requested an extension to the January board meeting. They came before us, showed us the townhouse development, they are, you know, not quite prepared to move forward with that at this point in time. They, they realize that, you know, Mandel development is occupying most of our time, and I think they want to see how that's all going to play out before they decide whether or not they want to move forward.
And, and most importantly, this is the agreement, R&amp;R is the name that the company, the Rygers have, that owns all their property. Retail buildings, the big manufacturing, the properties that are zone manufacturing in the back, where you see all that outdoor storage and so on. Where a couple of years back, there was a proposal to build apartments. It was filed, some of you may have noticed in the paper that during that period, they came in and proposed to build a large, quite a large, um, storage, public storage facility. You're all familiar with the U-Haul kind of buildings where you can store your private stuff. They wanted to build one there. The, the village, first the planning commission and then the board as a whole, were, were very much in opposition to that proposal, basically on the grounds that we, we didn't feel that was an appropriate use for a large piece of property in the absolute village center. So, we proposed to rezone it, which, and they didn't want us to rezone it because they wanted it to stay industrial. What we ultimately did is reach an agreement that they, we would continue to encourage them to do, to look for a different type of development than a large self-storage facility, that in effect would just be people coming and going and leaving and stuff, hardly any employees, not a benefit to the center of the village. This is the agreement we have, basically, it's been every six months or so, for two years now?
Yeah, and this was something that we discussed with their lawyer that was here, and it was in the context of, you know, if either side waits to take action, it could hurt them, that side legally. And so what we agreed to was, well, let's just do a pause, so nobody feels like they're under the gun and being forced to do everything. Let's do a pause and give Rygers some room to move. Neither side is giving up any legal rights by doing that. And then we just continued to extend that pause. I think it's just a sign of good faith on both sides, working towards something, something that works.
You need a motion from us there?
Yes, sir. I'll make a motion to...
Renew it?
Yeah, renew it.
Renew it, it's ten. Second?
Second.
Second from Christina. Further discussion? There are none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So I'll be signing that later. Next item, Dave?
Yep, the next item under my agenda is review and approval of scope of contract modification for Interflue. As you may recall, Interflue is the firm that the village hired to do the stormwater stream bank stabilization project out along our interceptor sewer, on the east side of the park, along the Underwood Creek. As part of that process, this went to the Public Works Committee back in June, I believe it was, and the committee selected the, the design alternative to actually physically move the creek further to the west to get it completely away from the interceptor and solve this problem, hopefully for well past all of our lifetimes. That does require a change to the original contract with them, because there's additional work that will have to take place as outlined in their letter. The increase is an additional $35,500, and it is mostly work for the FEMA LOMAR, which requires the map amendment for the floodplain, because it's going to have to be remodeled because the creek will be moved. There is no anticipated change to the floodplain. In fact, they won't let us modify or change the floodplain, but we still have to go through the entire exercise, and then once we're done, recreate the model with the new stream cross-sections. So it's my recommendation that the board approve this particular amendment.
This went through Public Works?
Yes.
And was Pat at the meeting that this was discussed?
Yes.
And he was okay with it?
Yep.
I didn't get a chance to ask him normally, he would talk to us. I would defer Pat on this.
Yep. Yep, the Pat was part of the process, will approve the additional, the additional work.
Well, I was there for the, for part of that, not Public Works, as was George.
Okay, so, um...
So I'm looking, looking for a motion.
We need a motion for someone to approve the contract alteration with Interflue.
I'll, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, further questions? There are none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay?
Okay, last and certainly not least, in your packet, is a memo, multiple memos actually, from Monica Hughes, as well as the table that I created in regards to all the projects and where we are currently. As you, as you guys are all well aware, we've got a lot of different things going on right now. And in order to make some semblance of order to that, I put together this table. On this table, I lost it on here, where'd it go? There we go.
Yep.
Trying to do this right-handed, it's not working a lot for me. Come on, Dave. So the first item on this, on this chart is the Mandel and PTO request. I think we've spent sufficient time on that this evening. We don't have to necessarily go into any more detail unless anybody has any specific questions for me. The municipal water from Wauwatosa is part of the Mandel. We have submitted some additional questions as per the direction of the Works Committee to the city of Wauwatosa. They are currently working through those. I would expect, based on the schedule of vacations on parties over there, that we should get something from them within probably two weeks, hopefully answering all of our questions, bringing that back to the Public Works Committee and moving forward. I have submitted to the attorney a draft agreement that he is in the process of reviewing that will also hopefully be sending to the Public Works Committee and then offer some initial discussion with the city of Wauwatosa here in the near future. Does anybody have any questions on municipal water? Uh, the next one up is the TID 3 request. Ellers is still reviewing this information. We met with them last week to go over their initial review, came up with a bunch of additional questions that need to be answered, that they needed additional information from both our secondary consultant, Concord Consulting, which is doing the review of all of the infrastructure and hard constructions, such as the buildings, parking, all that stuff, to make sure that their estimates are, are close to accurate. So they need some additional information from them and some additional information from Mandel. I would expect we should be getting something back from them within the next week or so as well.
Dave, I want to ask you about, and this is sort of directed at the public a little bit too. I put together for myself a spreadsheet regarding basically tax dollars, 43 houses versus 21 houses and 237 apartments, just some back-of-the-envelope math on this, as you TIF, as you water funding, it's a complex spreadsheet that I have put together. I know you've seen kind of it. You told me I'm at least tracking well enough.
You're in the right universe.
Yeah, I'm missing fees, I'm missing all sorts of things like that, but I had thought about converting that into some type of presentation that I would get, whether it be to the Junior Guild or whoever wants to listen to it, so people can start to see a breakdown of the numbers of, because it really isn't, I mean, I know what Ellers is putting together because I've seen this type of stuff before, but questions that people have are really, and I think it kind of gets to Tom's point. You don't have, Tom asked earlier, we spoke earlier, you know, you don't have to do this, you can do something else. And it is sort of, that is sort of the analysis here, because everyone knows, you know, School Sisters, something's going in there. Prison, hospital, all single-family homes, 237 apartments, something. And so I think, when, when I talk to people, you know, I, I'd like people to at least be able to see, because something's very important to me, and I think it's very important to everybody, is the difference between all single-family homes, and I picked the number of 43, if anybody listened to or read the school analysis, I basically took the neighborhood that is over there, and I did a size of the School Sisters property on, on the GIS site, and I just superimposed it over the top, and it came out to be about 44 lots. If you just take lot sizes like what's in that neighborhood over there. So that's the number I'm, that I've been using. I know Mandel, they use the 66 or whatever number they use, but I thought, you know, apples to apples. Am I going to, are we going to be able to, I mean, I'm going to be able to pull that all out from what Ellers gives us, but are we going to be able to have, I mean, at a meeting, am I going to be able to walk through with them or have a conversation with them about how to basically complete a different, have them help me fill in my numbers? Because I think those are going to be the kinds of numbers that people, you know, they're going to want to see what we're doing with, with the TIF, but as far as making it a little bit more digestible.
You're in finance, do it in finance. You're going to be in the room with them.
Oh, good point. I mean, I guess, I guess maybe my question should be to George too. I mean, is this the kind of thing we're going to be able to, we're going to be able to do? Or am I going to have to sit down with Ellers or make like...
Well, what I can tell you for sure is that all single-family, all single-family home development is not TIF-eligible.
Right.
And so, so it will be just a straight-up development, so there's a lot of other considerations besides...
But you got to understand, so what my, what my spreadsheet has is, okay, if we want to run water all the way from, from Tulsa, past the railroad tracks, we can do it through TIF, we can do it through, or if we do all single-family homes, now we're borrowing to do it, and how that gets paid back, what the dollars, dollars difference is over 25 years.
I think, except the way you went, why don't you start by sitting down with David Monica?
Oh, I did already.
But because, for instance, that...
But that was pretty preliminary.
That example, where you were just going to build water separate from anything happening on School Sisters, that's outside the Ellers.
Well, right, and I can do some of that myself, using whatever the dollars are that we have with the construction costs on it, that'll be part of the, so...
I, I would suggest, once we get the report back from Ellers, that you sit down with Monica and we can help you with that.
And George, I will, obviously, include you. This was the second question I wanted to get to you that day that we got cut off on the phone. It was my fault.
Yeah, so, you know, trying to take that information and synthesize it into a different kind of report that's useful for the way you're coming, absolutely. I mean, the only thing that we have to be careful of is not so much from what Ellers gives you, but anything that Ellers was reviewing that was proprietary, like costs of building materials or contracts or something, so typically you shouldn't be seeing that, we shouldn't be seeing them anyway, but that's all you have to really be careful of.
Right, and the only thing I'm really looking at is tax dollars, and I talked to the assessor about an estimate...
Value.
Value, or things like that.
You could, you could probably put the same value on each of those homes as the Marriott, Miller, uh...
Well, he's got a pretty, he's got a pretty tight, pretty tight range, I mean, really.
Well, and I was also, George, for the people in here, I was using the value that I was using for the homes, was I used as the example of three homes around me that had been knocked down, built up on lots that are roughly the same size, and I think, I think the assess value, David, remember I'm talking about this, is like 850 and 900 and something else where the, so trying to use some, some example ones.
He's given us detailed cost, you should, he's the builder, so you ought to use his number.
Understood. I, I, it's just who I, I also, I...
Okay.
So, hopefully within the next couple of weeks, we'll get that report, and then John will sit down with you and kind of walk through it.
Well, and it'll get, it'll come to finance, after you've reviewed it and found, now you have no more major questions, right?
As, as noted in my memo, it's my recommendation that the Finance Committee and the Village Board meet together to go through that, to, you know, have that conversation as a group versus individually.
So you're, you want to, a committee of the whole meeting with the Finance, public members?
Yes.
Okay, we ought to, we ought to start, as soon as you get, get that back, we need to start polling to find out there.
Absolutely. Um, the next item under the list here is the TID number two amendment. As you know, we're looking at amending the TID number two for the purpose of assisting us in financing the daylighting of the creek. That is something that we're working out with Ellers, we should have that within the next few weeks as well. We'll distribute that then to the board and the Finance Committee to see what that looks like. Uh, the Underwood Creek restoration, uh, this is the, the daylighting project, the, we're currently working through the, the appraisal part of the one-hour martinizing aspect. The transportation bill that is sitting in Congress right now actually has a specific provision in it for... this actual kind of work, the removing of fish barriers.
You mean the infrastructure bill?
The infrastructure bill, yes. As removal of fish barriers and, uh, replacing habitat as a specific portion of that grant. Um, the Suits District was kind enough to find that section and send it to me so that we knew we could potentially, you know, go after some of those funds as well. Um, my only concern on that is how that gets allocated and if it goes through the state, are we ever actually gonna have the opportunity to apply for it, so we'll have to wait.
We're gonna keep moving along.
We're gonna keep moving along like it doesn't exist, and if it, if it is, that would be a, an awesome bonus. Uh, the traffic utility, there is new event information available. It's in your packet tonight under my report from Monica. Uh, there's also a new spreadsheet with some updated numbers for the transportation, uh, the actual aspect of the roads. What I don't have yet is the, um, all pathway stuff. Talked to the engineer today. He'd actually done his review and sent it back to his, um, his support person to relook at a couple of sections that he thought, um, potentially might need to be storm-sourced versus open-cut ditch just because of the confines of the, of the right-of-way. Um, and then, and or looking at purchasing additional right-of-way to move it off, uh, of, of the backside of the ditch, so. Hopefully I'll have that by the end of this week and be able to forward that all off to you. As soon as we get that, we'll also be looking to have a meeting for the transportation utility as well.
Maybe a hole for that.
Yeah, because we need to get some of those decisions made prior to the budget. Streambank stabilization we just talked about, and then the paving program. Uh, we're doing stormwater work right now on Highland. You'll notice that it's closed in sections. That's because we've been cross-cover work. Uh, we should be done with that before the end of the week. The contractors, Stark Asphalt is still, uh, looking like they'll be able to be here mid-September, uh, towards the end of September to do the actual work. So it's probably gonna be a lot of weeks here still of actual paving work. Last but not certainly not least, for those of, uh, the people of the village who were without power for four or five days. As you know, we had a major storm and, uh, we lost power to about fifteen hundred homes or so within the village during that event. Portions of the village did not receive power back until Saturday morning. The, We Energies, and talking to them today, and I still don't have the full report because they're still vetting, um, all their data. But she indicated to me today that they had a total of two hundred and forty thousand-plus customers out after that event. Uh, they had pulled in workers from out of state and around, they had over a thousand workers per day out there working on it. Um, most of the long-term outages that we had were major transmission lines where multiple poles and multiple transformers were knocked down and it just takes a lot of time to get that done and pull it off. There are actually two reliability projects that are coming forward here this year that they've, um, been working on. That is, there's a smunderdirt work they're gonna do in the morning side park lane. Uh, I think it goes up to the north. I asked her for new map. I haven't got it yet as of today, but I should. In the near future, I'll share that with everyone when I get it. Uh, and then the other area is just, uh, along North Avenue coming south towards Village Green. There's another feeder back there that runs through some very dense wooded areas and they chose, instead of clear-cutting all the woods in that whole area, um, because there's two lines that come together that they're gonna bury that, so. That, all that work is supposed, was originally scheduled to be done by the end of this year, but I know that some of it got pushed out and I don't have the updated schedule for that as of yet. But when I do get that, I'll, I'll be sure to pass it on to, to all of you. And of course, um, all things being equal last night, um, you know, what, ten, twelve days after the storm, one tree let loose on the on the west side of the village and took out power again for a big chunk of the village um for about six hours from eleven PM until five AM, so. She's gonna love it, those wonderful old aspects. Uh, that concludes my report.
Regarding this, what are the color codes? Just to help you track? Uh, where this is your, uh, this is your spreadsheet on the road?
That's the road spreadsheet, yep.
Yeah, the colors.
That's just years, different years.
Uh, in the grand total, the yellow is kind of spread out. Does that mean anything?
I gotta look at it quick.
No, it's, it's.
Yellow, yellow.
So you can just say total. So the year is its own color and the total for the year is.
No, it's just that in twenty twenty-nine, uh, you know, it's all spread out here because we're, we're doing multiple years of small clusters of.
I think it's smaller.
I'm good though, thanks.
Okay.
Other questions on David's report? Okay, all right. Uh, moving on now to uh, the report of the Village Attorney. Hector, do you have anything to say?
I have no report.
Thank you. Standing committees, Plan Commission, Trustee Mahalcy.
Oh, thanks. Boy, boy, finally my turn, huh? Let me turn that page. Um, uh, we did meet on August fifth and, uh, there was one item? Two items on the agenda. Uh, the first was, uh, plan of operation for Yamas Family Restaurant in the, uh, eight-hundred, eight-ninety building of Elm Grove. Uh, this is a family, Mexican family-style business that, uh, is gonna specialize in breakfasts, they say. Um, we approve them, uh, we approve them, uh, without objection for zero and, uh, we wish them all the luck because it's been a long time since there was a restaurant in that, in that business, in that location. Uh, the next item of business was, uh, draft survey map for those property located at one-four-six-two-five Watertown Plain. Again, that's the church that's in that area and they're attempting to, uh, split off the single-family home there into our one.
They're considering.
Considering.
They haven't filed anything, so they're just trying to figure out.
So it was just a discussion at that point and, uh, they took in our comments and uh, I haven't heard back from them, have.
Nope.
So we don't know what's gonna happen.
I didn't realize that house was.
Boy, it used to be the housing and they'll use it for that way and when they, this is the second time they've been applying commission and it, it's, it's difficult to separate because they.
Just from the way they built the building.
If you look at how the parking lot kind of runs right up to the house and they wanna keep parking for the church, but then where do you make the lot line and how do you keep access to the church? It's got some complications as to how you can do it without easement. So they're gonna keep working on it.
And that concludes the report for that day. Uh, we met again on July twenty-eighth and at that meeting, it was, uh,
Coincidentally.
Coincidentally, School Sisters, they officially requested, uh, approval of a certified survey map, comprehensive plan, rezoning and conditional use permit for the redevelopment. Uh, there was a short presentation by the Mandel Group. Uh, following the presentation, there was public comment.
For this?
And that concludes the two reports.
Questions regarding Plan Commission? Hearing none, we'll move on to Library Board. Trustee says?
Thank you. Uh, the Elm Grove Library Board met on August sixteenth. Our library has officially returned to normal days and hours of operation. Please note that the study room has also reopened for normal use and that furniture removed during the past year has returned. Our library director shared metrics which track monthly utilization rates which continue to show significant increases year, over year. For example, July twenty-twenty-one circulation of shelved materials, your books, your DVDs has increased by forty-one percent over July twenty-twenty, so ten thousand two hundred and four items were shelved in July. Um, there's additional metrics that are, um, part of our minutes that you can check out on our website. Um, the library board started to discuss a draft of the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-six capital budget request. And finally, our village manager, Dave DeAngelis, was appointed chair of the Waukesha County's Library Planning Committee, the Act One-Fifty Committee, by Waukesha County Board Chair Paul Decker to evaluate developments in libraries over the past five years, as well as recommend changes to the county's five-year library services plan that was last adopted by the county board in twenty-seventeen. The library board wanted to thank Dave and hope he knows that they're thrilled to have him in this position. Please see the minutes on our website for more details from the meeting. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Question, Christina?
Thank you, Christina.
Uh, Public Works, uh, Chairman was not here. George, you are there?
Uh, we did not meet this month, but there is a resolution from the previous month.
Right.
Resolution oh-eight-three, or two-three-two-one. It's to approve the Compliance Maintenance Annual Report that the DNR requires us to file for publicly-owned domestic wastewater treatment operations. So I recommend that the, the resolution be adopted.
Second to the motion?
Second.
Motion, second to approve Resolution oh-eight-two-three-two-one, the Compliance Maintenance Annual Report for DNR, for any con? Are you none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, Matt Siefer, and Public Safety, Trustee says?
There was no meeting this month.
Thank you. And Legislative, Trustee Thomas.
Uh, we did not meet this month.
Thank you. Park and Recreation, um, I'll report on that. Trustee Cornell is absent. Um, as partially was discussed earlier, we met last week um and had a, um, again, this data would be available on the website for people, the end of the pool season report, um, on attendance and um, it, it was a very robust year, I mean, as our, as our white guards all headed back to school, actually a little earlier than we had hoped. It happens kind of every year. They all have to go back to school while it's still hot out, but we can't operate a pool without white guards. Um, so it, it was successful in a population sense of, you know, first year back, open completely, worked well. We did talk about a couple of issues. We had, um, one at the pool and, and one, um, with a private rental pool of staff response to, to, uh, we can just call it, bad behavior. And in most cases, the incidents worked out very well. They did it, but it prompted a discussion that, uh, we're gonna take up at the Administrative Personnel Committee to, to work for standardized protocols so all employees anywhere in, in, in our workforce, but particularly those who are in the park around this building know how to, how to respond to people, you know, either breaking the rules or breaking the law, that it's not their job to deal with that. It's to, you know, call, call the police, deal with it and turn it over to them. So we're, it was happy, you know, we're also gonna be coming back to Legislative for some changes in our, um, or at Personnel and Administrative, to our rental policies and what kind of rules we're gonna update in there, um, as a result of some of this. But the, uh, then we spent a great deal of time, as was referred to earlier, talking with Mary Indian about the condition of the pool house, this long series of complaints through the summer. Um, we've all been, uh, able to follow at least visually through the good pictures of Marriott. And we ended up with the, the committee, we've talked about this numerous times, but the committee unanimously approved our recommendation to the board that, that the bathrooms and locker rooms be upgrade, upgraded to current standards by the opening of next season, so they're usable and I will again pass that on to all of you. It'll be something we wanna, some of that work will start this fall. It was already planned. But we'll be taking it up under, in the budget session as to when we have some, some ideas of what, what the cost per annum is gonna be. Um, blah, 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 blah. Otherwise, there's standard, standard discussions about, uh, success of all the summer programs, the winter cal, uh, catalog will be coming out soon on all the winter, uh, activities and groups and so on, so pay attention to that if you're interested to follow. And, uh, that, that concludes the recreation committee. I have any questions specifically on the recreation? As a, as having personally attended it a couple of times, other than the fact that the water in the splash pad is colder than the water in the pool, because it doesn't go through the heaters. So the first time you take your little one to walk into that, it's a little bit of a bolt. Uh, boy, they're pot, it's potter. It's just wonderful how, what a great project that turned out to be.
I, I can attest that five-year-olds don't know the difference.
Oh, well, a little bit younger than those. Uh, Administrative and Personnel, I don't, you didn't mean?
We did not meet this past month, thank you.
All right, and the last committee is Finance and Licensing, Trustee.
We did not meet this month.
Yes, you did.
No, we did not. We did not have a quorum.
We had no quorum.
You're kidding. Wow.
We did have three members.
And we did review the items on the agenda. Uh, the first of which, therefore, will present de novo for this body to consider is the application for a Class B beer and Class B liquor license for Yamas Family Restaurant. Um, they've applied for actually the, what was originally the liquor license for that spot. For that building that went to the Gingerbread House, which then closed and it's coming full circle back to that, uh, particular location. Uh, the three of us that were present found no objections to approving this license application and I'll make that motion at this time.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. I'll just note that what they're proposing to do is exactly what the previous operating two restaurants, you know, where they had beer and liquor inside of the bar and then in the little area outside where they had the, uh, what they have, they have a deck, but that's part of the formal restaurant, but in the, on a courtyard park which is separated off with a barrier. They're, they're proposing the exact same kind of operation. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then they also reviewed the voucher list totaling one million, three hundred and two thousand four hundred and fifty-eight dollars and fifty-six cents. We, uh, as far as it goes, recommend approval. One of the reasons why it was so large is that there was a, I think about a nine hundred and fifty-three thousand dollar retirement of uh, some of the debt that we've incurred, so there was a large annual debt payment in this amount, which is why it's over a million dollars. Uh, I'll make a motion that we approve the voucher list at this time.
There a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the monthly vouchers, questions? All in favor say aye.
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 We also set the first budget hearing for the capital budget review, so the Rec Committee better get going. We have Friday, September twenty-fourth at seven-thirty AM for the annual budget review.
Have the, all the committee members responded that they could make this? When I read that, I thought it was these are the proposed dates you were pulling.
Well, this is the ones we've set at the meeting.
Okay.
Because the three of us present.
So now a member didn't come to the meeting?
Well, I got off to see it. If there was a significant problem with that data, we had one member at least who couldn't make the seventeenth, so.
I'm out of town, so.
We'll see. Um, but tentatively, that's what it is.
This is for staff departments to present comments or, or discussion of capital needs.
Right, they'll present their capital requests as have been reviewed by the Finance Director and, and the Village Manager and then we'll go through and, and see what we can do. Um, we may, as we normally do, we go through this preliminarily at this time and then revisit it at the end of the budget process to see if we need to shuffle some of these, uh, items around in order to get within the levy limit restraints from the, uh, state.
The Elm Grove Community Foundation meets, um, on Friday, September twenty-fourth at seven-thirty AM. It'll be our meeting right after Oktoberfest where we kind of do our debrief and everything, so. I'm meeting, I might be a little late.
Well, this is finance.
Okay, I thought you said that we were meeting this.
This is the finance.
Oh, you're welcome to come.
Oh, that's okay.
And you might not get to the same room you guys like, but.
I'll stay where I'm supposed to be. I wasn't sure who said that the committee's.
Actually, if you can attend, it might be very informative.
I'm sure it would be, George.
We ran through the, I mean, this is also the main budget too, because we go through every department and.
Absolutely, as I said in the, the library report, I mean, we just started reviewing the numbers there for this meeting. So, no, I actually want to come, so I'll try to get over there.
And that concludes the report.
Christine, as you, under other business, you wanted to make an update on.
I did, I'm going to put my foundation hat on. So the sight, sounds, and taste of Germany are making their way to our Elm Grove Village Park. The fifth annual Elm Grove Community Foundation Oktoberfest kicks off in Elm Grove Park on Friday, September seventeenth, which is new this year for everyone who might be watching, at five PM with a ceremonial keg tapping. We're also going to have live music by Milwaukee's own Julian Kozak, local German, local beers, and a Friday night fish fry. The fun continues Saturday, September eighteenth at three-thirty PM with a zero-point-five-k fun run. It's become really popular. It starts at a Dandies Irish pub, and there's, there's beer shops along the way to kind of kick off the Oktoberfest activity, uh, Oktoberfest.
To make, to make the half-kilometer barrel.
Yeah, it's literally like seven hundred and forty-nine steps, I think. And you have beer tabs on your bib, and it's hilarious and it's fun, and you get a T-shirt. So that'll kick off Saturday, and then followed by the traditional Oktoberfest celebration with authentic live German music, festive food, activities, and again, lots of local German beer options. The foundation is honored to be a small part of keeping Elm Grove a special place. Twenty-twenty-one will be the third year for the zero-point-five-k fun run and the fifth year for Oktoberfest in the park. This is the largest annual fundraiser for the foundation, and the funds that we raise go right back into our community. We hope you can be a part of it. For more information, please visit, or to register, please visit our website, elmgrovefoundation.org.
And it's really qualified as an Oktoberfest when you hold it in September?
Oktoberfest in Germany isn't September.
Well, that makes sense. That answers.
If the Germans suit it along, we might as well too.
It could be like the number twenty-six or something like that.
Any other business, sir?
No, sir.
None? Motion to adjourn?
Second.
No, I didn't make it.
I heard you say motion to adjourn.
Okay, I'm asking for a motion.
I'll make a motion.
You'll get to make the motion?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We honor adjournments?
Thank you.
Thank you.